We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will start by, the board will grant permission to Westwood Media Center to record the meeting. Is there anyone else wishing to record tonight's meeting? Okay. We will go into our first and very important Chairman's Update item. We have the pleasure of acknowledging two employees tonight who have achieved 25 years of service with the town of Westwood. And I'm going to start with one. We have Captain Steven Lund. He's not able to be here tonight, but Chief Deckers is here and representing the fire department. So I'm just going to read what was submitted on him. And it's very impressive. So Captain Steven Lund, he came to Westwood in August of 95 as a dispatcher, which I didn't know. In April of 98, he joined the fire department and was trained at the Mass Firefighting Academy in Stowe. And while at the academy, he attained his firefighter one and two certifications. He was promoted to lieutenant in town in December of 2004, promoted again in August of 2007 to the rank of captain. And since that time, he has remained the shift commander of Group Two. And some of you may remember this, in 2015, he received the Medal of Valor at the Firefighter of the Year Awards. And that's done annually with the governor. And I actually attended that one. A very touching program. And it was a really important moment. And he was also Westwood Fire Alarm Superintendent and has been a member of the state hazmat team for the past 11 years. Steve grew up in Westwood. He went to school in Westwood. And he and his wife Jen live in Millis with their four children. So please join me in congratulating Captain Lund for his achievement of 25 years with the town.[143.19][143.19][applause] And if you would be kind enough to convey to him our appreciation, we're sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but we are happy that he's made this achievement. And we have, we'll see, a nice clock for you to take to him, please.
I will do.
And thank him. Okay. And we do have the next recipient here, and that's Marie O'Leary. Unbelievable. I remember 95 when I was on FinCom. I didn't know that was the same beginning. So Marie was hired by the town in 95. I've got to imagine Pam, you must have done the hire. And she's served as our town accountant ever since. Amongst many things, Marie is responsible for maintaining the town's general ledger, overseeing the weekly processing of accounts payable and payroll. She administers the town's comprehensive insurance program. She makes sure that all payments are in compliance with DOR, Department of Revenue Regulations, and within town meeting authorizations. She also has major responsibilities with annual reporting to DOR and the annual outside audit. Marie is a member of the town's finance team, which we all know is quite a team. She's the backbone of the financial operations, well-respected by the town and school departments and all her colleagues. She's well-respected by the select board, I might add. And she's known for her accuracy, commitment to quality, willingness to help the town continually improve and achieve results, and results you all have achieved. And Marie, you've done an outstanding job. So during her time, Westwood achieved a AAA bond rating, and we hold on to that. We've sold through her work and others in the finance department over $100 million in bonds with the town's AAA credit rating backing that up. We have strong compliance with financial policies, and we regularly receive excellent audit results. And again, a tribute to Marie. In addition, the town's Comprehensive Financial Report, or CAFR, the town has 22 consecutive annual awards from the Government Financial Officer Association. These are remarkable accomplishments. And may I say it again, these are remarkable accomplishments for a small town like Westwood. And we really appreciate your handling of the town's finances with such accuracy, professionalism, and transparency. And Marie has been in town for over 30 years with her husband David, who's here tonight. And they have their children Desmond and Olivia here as well. Hi, guys. You were just little guys when your mom started. And you have active roles to volunteer in the community as well. So please join me in congratulating Marie O'Leary for 25 years.[315.83][315.83][applause] So since you're here, and we'll Photoshop Steve's picture. Why don't we have a picture and we'll give you your spots?
Another photo.
But you do, Michael. Okay.
No, you know what? It's too heavy to hold in one piece. You'll give us to you.
I got it.
We'll give that to him.
25 years of dedication.
Congratulations.
Yes. I think I gave it to Pam. I think I gave it to Pam.
I need the chair.
And of course, everybody's welcome to stay as long as you want, but we would like to.
Sneak out?
Yep.
Celebrate.
Totally your call. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Well, I thought they were staying for the meeting.
I know. Okay, so next on our agenda, I just would like to announce that the annual John Cronin Public Service Award is now open for nominations. For those of you who don't know, John Cronin once served as the town's treasurer. And the criteria that one should think of when nominating people for this award include experience with leadership, exceptional service to the community, years of dedication, strong work ethic, integrity, cooperation, diversity of service, volunteerism, impact on the town, and dedication to the Westwood community. The application, is it available on the website yet, Tish?
I'll put it on tomorrow.
It will be, okay. So a nomination form will be available on the town's website, or you can contact Town Hall at 781-326-4172. And the nomination period is open until April 6. And the award is given to the selected individual at town meeting. I think that's May 4. Does that sound like the right date?
Correct, yes.
All right. So hopefully, we'll receive many great nominations for that. The early voting is coming up. And we hear from our town clerk that today was a successful first day of early voting. It takes place right here in the Gillette Meeting Room at the police station. So the rest of the week for early voting is as follows: Tuesday, 8:30 a.m. to 8 p.m., Wednesday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Thursday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and again Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the police station. And otherwise, the election day for the presidential primary is March 3. And that will take place at the normal voting locations around town.
Correct.
Okay, so let's go into our agenda items for tonight. Our first agenda item, which is a scheduled public hearing for Highline Auto Group License Application, is actually, we've been asked to cancel that tonight. And it will be rescheduled for our meeting taking place on March 16. And my understanding is that there was an administrative error in advertising this hearing. So in an abundance of procedural caution, we will cancel tonight and reschedule. So I'll take a motion to do that.
I move that the hearing tonight scheduled for Highline Auto Group License, or public hearing, be rescheduled to March 16, 2020. Or I move that we cancel tonight's public hearing, and that it'll be rescheduled at a future date, which tentatively appears to be March 16, 2020.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Okay, next agenda item, change in manager for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. Gentlemen, come on over. So Anthony's, which has been in operation since, I think, 2014 or 15? Do you remember which year it opened?
I do.
14, we broke out, maybe 2015?
Not.
I think 2015.
I would say 2015.
Park, 2015.
Yeah, along with other things. We have a request for change in manager of record. Previously, it was Michael Fishman who has left the organization. And now we have Michael Dansick.
Correct.
Am I close? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Oh, good. I practiced. Okay, so Michael, you have joined Anthony's recently. Previously, you were in Florida.
Correct.
Working for another restaurant.
Correct.
And now you're on board here in Westwood. And Nora, you report that the Corey result is favorable?
It was.
Okay. Is there anything outstanding in this besides ABCC?
There's not. So if this board votes to approve the change, it'll go to ABCC, and we'll await their decision.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
Welcome.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we grant approval to the change of manager of record on the application to Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza to reflect that Michael Dansick as the new manager of record pending ABCC or the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So as easy as that. Good luck.
Thank you.
Stay for a while.
Yes.
Other persuasive argument on my part, of course.
Please, if you'd like to say anything.
Madam Chair and Board members, I did actually want to introduce you to Eric Bush, who you probably will see around the location. He's the area director. He has been a general manager of Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. And this is one of five locations that he has in Mass and one in Cranston. But he's at all of them pretty frequently. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. It's a great addition to the community. I know it's a popular spot, so.
It is, yeah.
Are you the new Brett?
I'm the new Brett. Now Brett's my boss. Funny how that works.
Well, good luck to you, Michael, in your new position. And we hope it goes really well. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Select Board Member Walsh. And I will refuse myself from the next agenda item.
Which means, Sarah, you must be due.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sarah. How are you?
Good, how are you?
So let me just read just the precursor, if you will. We're here to review the request for the Westwood Housing Agent, which would be you, to approve a local action unit application for two affordable housing units at the 45, which is the former Westwood Lodge property. So did you want to tell us anything before we?
Sure. So you've seen local action unit applications before. This should be fairly familiar to you. It's the first step in bringing these new affordable units online. They've already been approved through the permitting process with Planning Board. And now the developer, Westwood Green LSC, has secured the services of a lottery agent, MCO Housing. You may recall that MCO did the marketing for the condos at Westwood Place.
Okay.
With great success, all of those units have been sold. So they've submitted a local action unit application. Provided that you approve this application and issue your signature on it tonight, it will be submitted to the state for review. Once DHCD reviews this application, at that point, the regulatory agreement, I'll be back here with that document to be signed. And then we can proceed to place it on the subsidized housing inventory.
Okay. So are there more than two? Are they just putting two now? Are there more than two in that?
It's just two.
Just two, okay.
Yeah, it's two plus the five-unit house.
Correct.
Did we already go through this process for the house?
So group homes don't go through this process.
Okay.
They go through a separate process to be added to the SHI, where the Department of Developmental Services will review the funding stream for that property. So that's gets listed separately. The only units before you are the two onsite townhome units that will be age-restricted, along with the rest of the 40-unit development.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Do you want to do the motion, Joe?
Do you have it in front of you?
I do. I'll read it, and you can tell me. How's that?
Well, I'll have to see.
I move that a select board approve the local action unit application to authorize a select board chair, or sitting chair, shall we say tonight, to sign the signature of support for the local action unit application, and permit the Green Company and the MCO Housing Services to submit the application to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its final approval.
Second.
Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Out of necessity, yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sarah.
Get your home time to, nice and early. Dan, you can come back.
I will, yes.
Only if you want to, though. I will, yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is going through the annual town meeting listing. And it actually comes up twice in our materials. And I think I'm going to move down, I'll reference a page. If we go to packet page 147, to the select board articles that follow all the budget articles. And I have to say, I really like this working article number system that we're using this year. It makes it so much easier. Anyway, the first article is the Fire Alarm System Regulation. And Chris, you're asking us to indicate if we need, have any desire to amend or remove any of these articles, and if neither of those, then taking a vote on accepting them as presented?
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I suggest, could we go with item number five, which are Select Board Six and Seven, why Nora's here?
Absolutely. So these are also in the list of articles. Okay, so we had held two articles for the potential sale of the Obed Baker House on High Street. And we were waiting to receive responses to RFQs, were they?
It was an RFP.
An RFP, to see if there were any people interested in bidding on that. And we received one. And you're here to tell us, based on that, where it is and its level of completion, you're actually recommending we withdraw these articles.
I am.
So why don't you fill us in?
So we received one article from Todd Sullivan for a four possible scenario redevelopment of the Obed Baker House. And in his proposal, he sets forth four different options that he would like the board to consider and work with him to see if you're interested in any of those four. Because he's looking at four different options, he didn't go forward and develop the plans yet. In order to know whether we need a zoning amendment, we would need to know which plan. So it just doesn't make any sense.
Kind of hard to.
It is.
In a short period of time to then move forward.
Three of the four proposals would require some form of rezoning, but they're not the same. So I think we have to take a pause, review this proposal, call Todd in to meet with the board, and review the different options, and walk you through them, and see if any of the four are of interest. And then proceed with whichever one rises to the top, and then go to a future town meeting, if there's a rezoning that's necessary.
Now, I remember when we were thinking about what to do with the Colburn School down the street. We had a committee that actually.
We did, yes.
There were two interested parties, and they vetted a lot of the issues, and then brought something forward to us here.
Right. If you'd like to form a committee for that, to do this one as well, that would be.
I think it's, well, I'd like you all to consider it. It allowed for a meeting and a long presentation and a lot of discussion, which is kind of different than what we would normally do at this meeting. It would sort of vet out a lot of issues. For instance, out of four, after some discussion, a small group may say, there are really only two that rise to a level of consideration. And then it could come to us. I don't know, just having looked at them, if that would be the case or not. But I would just ask you guys to think about it. I don't think we have to decide tonight. But I do think it would be worth rolling up sleeves and talking to him. Can we do that with just this one submittal?
You can. So.
We can go down a.
I don't know if Chris or Pat want to comment on that, but the RFP is in order, and one proposal is acceptable. We don't have to wait for any others. And there's language in that that allows us to amend the procedure however you find appropriate. So we have a lot of flexibility.
By withdrawing these, I'm fine doing it, but we're not negating the RFP.
Not at all.
So we'll keep this option alive.
Right. And then it could come back.
And Madam Chairman, let me point out, this has not been an easy process dealing with this building. We've been at this for a long time.
Kind of Groundhog Day.
Yeah, yeah. Best analogy you can give. So it might be wise to bring in some different eyes, ears, and thought process to work with Todd on what his four options are. And maybe there's some kind of hybrid between the four that great minds can put together and come up with a successful plan.
Okay. Well, I think it would be great to hear back on how you think we might be able to do that, because he's got some creative thoughts. And we need to do something with that property. It's been sitting there vacant.
Yes, yeah. And I will say, he was interested the last time we went out to bid as well. And he was interested in submitting a proposal, but the timing just didn't work out for him then.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't you come back to us? This reasonable timeframe, I think we should keep this moving along.
Sure.
And not let it go dormant, and then try to catch up to another town meeting cycle, but really get it all straightened out.
I would see working through this in the spring, and by summer, having plans ready to go forward, so we know whether there's a need for rezoning.
Yeah.
So as we get through the public hearings for town meeting, if you recall, there's sometimes a little bit of a lull between the final hearing and town meeting. That might be a good time to pick that up.
Yeah. And I, you know, let's be creative, get some real estate experts. I don't know. You guys think about it. You can get input from all of us offline after we think about it tonight. And I think it's great that we've got a response. Let's see if we can get a strong outcome from it. So it's our Select Board Articles Six and Seven. And the request is that we take action to withdraw those. Any questions from either of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I move that we withdraw the Select Board Six zoning amendment article related to the present disposition of the Obed Baker House property, shown on lots 42 and 43, and assesses map 21, and Select Board Seven article related to the town-owned property on High Street in the vicinity of the Obed Baker House, from the town meeting warrant, and notify the planning board of its decision to withdraw the articles prior to the planning board public hearing on February 25, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So we're down two articles with that. Nora, thank you. Look forward to hearing back from you on it. Is there anything else while you're here that you need to participate in?
I know you also have the medical use article.
Please. Why don't we go to those? I just want to get back to, okay. So the articles that we have, we talked about them at our last meeting. We have zoning amendment article relative to medical use, where we, at our last meeting, agreed to take over that article on a scaled-down version. Nora and I were at the, and you were, John, as well, at the Finance Commission meeting. And we had a very good discussion with the Finance Commission. And the plan is to take the presentation from that meeting and bring it forward to the planning board tomorrow night, so they understand the scope of this article in its smaller form. And then we'll ask again, because they didn't respond at their last meeting, whether or not they'd like to co-sponsor. Is there any update you want to give us on that one since?
Nothing. Nothing has changed since your last meeting, or since we discussed it with the Finance and Warrant Commission. The proposal is to replace the term "office of a doctor or dentist," not "a resident on the premises," with the term "office of a healthcare professional," wherever it appears in the bylaw. And then to add the already-defined term of "medical center or clinic" to the use chart.
And am I right, the medical use, those two definitions are in the overlay district portion of the zoning bylaw for University Station?
They are. That's where the definitions came from.
That's where they are contained.
Right. So it's just making them consistent. The "office of a healthcare professional" would be allowed everywhere "office of a doctor or dentist" is allowed now, which is in all the commercial districts. And if a special perm is granted by the ZBA, it could also go in the general residence district. And then the "medical center or clinic" would only be allowed in the University Station development, as it's allowed today. So it's simply clarifying it by putting it in the chart to make it clear to everyone that that particular use, "medical center or clinic," is not permitted outside of University Station.
Any questions or comments on that?
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, to me, it's a technical clarification. We're not.
It really is. It really is.
And so.
Very narrow.
Very narrow. But in an attempt to reduce the exposure that we feel now, you know, I wonder if it goes far enough, but I think we're down this path, so we'll go there. And so from tomorrow night is when the planning board will give its recommendation for town meeting. Okay.
So tomorrow night, they will vote to make a recommendation to the Finance and Warrant Commission.
Correct.
And then go to the Finance and Warrant Commission on the second. And then they will eventually vote a recommendation to town meeting. All zoning amendment warrant articles have to have a recommendation for or against by the planning board at town meeting.
And it is, it's, we still, there's more work to be done. And it's not for this board. It will be for the planning board to do it. And I would say, right away, as soon as this round of.
There certainly is, yeah. So we would like to see the entire article that was originally proposed go forward, or some other form of that, to close the entire gap. But this is the most significant portion that we're most worried about right now.
Right. And I would expect the planning board would vote favorably. But is there a scenario where, aside from this article, where you could have a negative report from the planning board and a positive recommendation from?
FinCom, good vote.
FinCom?
Yeah. That's happened before, and it's happened in the reverse direction as well.
Well, it would be, I mean, that's why I think you're right. An affirmative vote would be great. It's, we're just doing a piece because it works for us to do it. And they, they weren't thinking at the time when they voted to remove the article of alternative options.
Doing pieces, right.
And as much as, you know, whatever, it is what it is. We're trying to get this piece, this narrow portion.
And just for your ratification, I have seen situations where the planning board has recommended to not vote in favor of something, and the Finance and Warrant Commission has voted to not recommend indefinite postponement, and town meetings still pass the zoning article.
Oh, okay, interesting.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything tonight on that, because we already voted that at our last meeting, to take it in this forum.
Correct.
Okay. So then the next one, Nora, is we took one of our miscellaneous articles. Now it's Select Board Article Nine, and to apply Article 97 to Morrison Park and Field. We again had a very interesting conversation with the Finance and Warrant Commission about this. There was some comments made by a couple of members wondering if we even needed to do this. I don't know where the commission in total will go. And we will talk about it tomorrow night with the planning board as an alternative to their zoning article, which would remove that same area from the overlay district that applies in Islington. So we're giving them an option if they would like to do that with their article. But yet, we are still proceeding with this one through the process. So that's what we plan to do tomorrow night. Any questions or comments on that?
No.
Nora, anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. So again, I don't think we need to take any action. We agreed to do this at our last meeting.
Well, it says we should vote to amend.
We're not amending anything.
Article Nine.
I don't think we're amending anything unless, oh, is there new language, Pat?
No.
Okay.
Not finalized language.
Okay.
I'm waiting for a report from BETA to finalize the language.
And there was a very interesting question from the Finance Commission. Could emergency helicopter landings still occur for transport?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I think my response was, I believe that they can. And in that situation, I'd rather beg for forgiveness than ask for permission.
Didn't know if you were doing other follow-up. Okay, so we're okay on that one.
As long as we don't build a helicopter landing pad, we're okay.
Well, unless it's tied to somehow to recreation, you can't.
I don't think there's room for all that. But anyway, just a thought. Nora, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Nora.
We'll see you tomorrow night.
In a situation where we need to get someone med flighted out, we land a helicopter anyplace we can.
Right.
Okay. And then we go back to, oh, let's go to the fire alarm system one. We have an awful lot of pages in this meeting packet today. Okay, on page 147, we have Select Board Article One, Chapter 175, Alarm Systems, Section 175.5, Regulations Revision to Language. We have seen for a while language on this. This would be a switch over to the wire system. This would be a switch over to the wire system, ceasing the hard-wire fire alarm system and going, only supporting the radio master fire alarm box system. Are there any issues that anybody on the board has with proceeding with this article?
So is there, is there a cost associated with...
About fifty-five hundred per...
Per box?
Per box. The town has about ten of them. The last time I looked, I believe I gave you a list
Yes.
of the twenty or so that are in town.
We should have that list available for the Finance Commission public hearing.
Okay.
Whatever we send to them for that meeting, it'd be great to include that in advance.
Okay.
And it's a fifty-dollar fine per day, but the way this is written, it gives three years for compliance.
Right, June of two thousand and twenty-three.
So if you have any issues now, would be a good time to express them. Otherwise, we should vote to proceed as is.
No, I'm fine.
I'm okay.
Can you take a motion on that, then? Let's do them individually.
Uh, let's see.
Just vote to approve as is, as presented.
I move that we accept the language as written on Select Board Article One regarding Chapter One Seventy-five Alarm Systems, Sections One Seventy-five Point Five, to move to a radio master fire alarm box system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next, we have the Select Board Article Two, which comes to us from the Westwood Environmental Action Committee. I spoke to this one when we were previewing articles. I think we will have, we act with us at the public hearing to make a brief presentation. This is a non-binding resolution in encouraging net-zero energy building construction for future school and municipal buildings. Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay.
I move that we approve Select Board Article Number Two, the non-binding resolution regarding net-zero energy for schools and municipal construction as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Article Three, Overnight Parking Restriction Change of Hours. We went through this a couple of meetings ago, can't remember exactly which one, and made some amendments to the initially-proposed language. And the essence is that we are changing the hours that there is prohibition of parking on the street and the period of time that can apply, but it will only be done on days where there's pending inclement weather conditions. So it ends up with prohibition from midnight to seven a.m. any day through and including the period from November fifteenth to April first, and again, pending inclement weather. So it will not be in effect every day during that period, only when necessary. And we talked with Finance Commission about how people would be notified, et cetera. So it would go through normal social media channels and other ways that we have available to the town over time.
Yes.
Any questions on that?
So, I'm sorry, Mike, do you want to go?
No, go ahead, John.
So I guess I'm a little bit confused with this one, Pat. So currently, there is a prohibition of overnight parking during certain months for a certain amount of time.
Two to five a.m., I believe it is.
Correct.
And now, so we're actually eliminating that. We're only going to have a prohibition when inclement weather is coming?
Yes.
For that, for that, for this period of time and for, also from midnight to seven a.m. So we're expanding the hours.
Or reducing the frequency.
Or reducing the frequency.
And this is worked out, I believe, between Police Chief, DPW, and you, Chris, all of them on this?
And Town Council, yes.
And Council. And I think there was a concern about if it's in effect all the time and it's at midnight, what happens to people who might be parked on the street for whatever reason, social, whatever, and not planning to be there overnight, but it moved it back sufficiently where the thought was that it could be reasonably put in place only when necessary. And I think one of the questions from the Finance Commission was, excuse me, why not just allow people to call the police department and say they've got company coming over? And my response was essentially, the police department doesn't really have the wherewithal to communicate.
It's difficult to manage.
Difficult to manage with a few people out on the street, patrolling the street in storm-related weather. You might overlook somebody and it just...
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to overthink it, but I, you know, if we're now going to allow people to get used to, I mean, right now, what happens is, there's very few people on the streets during those periods of time because they can't be. I, I feel like we're going backwards. I'm not sure how we're advancing a cause here. So, so the police are now going to have to do, if the chief's on board, I'll obviously defer to him, they're going to have to do more notifying of people prior to a storm. Like, right now, there's very few people on the street anyway.
Actually, if you talk to the DPW guys, that's not the case. There are a number of people who are on the street and they have difficulty plowing at times because of people staying on the street.
Well, a lot of it is pre-treating, too, which they do in advance of storms.
Correct. And Madam Chair, it's not just the plowing, it is the pre-treatment
Yeah.
that our DPW does, and they do it, as you know, at a variety of times throughout the day. What they're finding is the overnight hours tend to be more challenging because that's when they, they tend to come in and they're going around vehicles. So their performance tends to dictate those vehicles that are parked on the street, and we do have...
Those cars shouldn't be there today, I guess.
They shouldn't be there today.
Actually, if it's, if they're there before two a.m., they can be there.
Yeah.
So now, we're going to go from, we're going to go from two to five to midnight to seven, so it's a longer stretch.
Only when a storm is coming.
Only when... Or, oh, yeah, inclement weather, so it could be an icing issue versus a snowstorm.
But I guess, how does that help with pre-treatment? So if the storm's coming Thursday,
Yes.
and they're pre-treating on Tuesday?
They wouldn't pre-treat that far. They only pre-treat two or three hours ahead of time, John. So if the snow is going to start at three, they need to start pre-treating at midnight.
Right.
If we needed people off the road, I mean, we've had storms where blizzards are coming in. And I remember one, probably, what, seven or eight years ago, Deval Patrick was still governor? Or was it when Baker just came in? It was right around that change.
The snowstorms all sudden blend together would mean that.
I think it was, I think it was when Baker just became governor. And it was Friday, and everybody needed to be off the streets by mid-afternoon. And people were told not to go out. I mean, it was very clear you had to do things. If we needed to alert people to remove their cars earlier because it was a blizzard coming, we would still do that.
We can't do that. We have provisions to do that through the town manager.
Yeah, so...
So it, Chris can declare a snow emergency. I might not be wording it right. And we can notify people to get your cars off the street. If it starts snowing, let's take Blizzard seventy-eight on the commute home. We can notify people, get your cars off the street right now because we need to try and keep these streets clear. And if you've ever seen a street where a car is parked and they've had to plow around it and you get significant snow, it can be a mess for weeks later.
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I could just make a plug for our Code Red system?
You may.
So the notification will go out through social media and through our Code Red system. So we certainly encourage residents to sign up for the Code Red emergency notification system. That can be done by phone call, email, or text message.
To, is there a way online to see that on the website?
Yes, it's on, it's on the website.
Okay, so, and they can always call the Select Board's office at seven eight one three two six four one seven two.
They can.
Or they can, they can check in with the town clerk. There are a lot of ways to find out how to do that. And I, I will add to your plug. The Code Red system is only used when absolutely needed. It's not a liberally-used notification system. It's...
Correct. We, we try to provide the information to the residents as quickly as we can. And we're trying to reserve the phone calls for those extreme emergencies. So we really would encourage residents to sign up for the email notification as well as a text message.
Oh, and that's good, too. Right. Okay, you're good with that?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
No, it's a good discussion, so we'll proceed as is?
I think it's one of those things, too, if it, it's something we can't correct later.
It's nothing we can't correct later, but it also is going to take, taking our community through a bit of a learning curve, I think, with it.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you.
So I move that we vote to accept Article, yeah, Select Board Article Three on the overnight parking restrictions, change of hours, as amended and written before us this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next two, if we don't need to have any discussion, we can go through the administrative process of saying they're good as is. If you would like to have a discussion on those two, I will recuse myself because, again, it applies to Westwood Lodge. Anything? So I will let you two, I'll, I'll just handle the motions, but I will abstain from voting.
Okay. I move that we approve as written Select Board Article Four to accept municipal ownership of a portion of the former Westwood Lodge property encompassing the soccer and lacrosse field, better known as Lot Eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Okay. Select Board Article Five, I move that we accept Select Board Article Five to accept municipal ownership of a portion of the former Westwood Lodge property, parentheses, Lot One, to authorize a long-term lease of said property to Life Works for the construction and operation of a five-unit group home for persons with disability, as presently written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. And we've done the Obed Baker. Anybody want to tell me if we've missed anything?
I don't see it.
Okay, and we will hold off on any budget or capital article discussions until a future meeting?
Yes.
In advance of the March twenty-third Finance Commission public hearing. Okay, so that checks that box. And...
It's new business.
New business. Okay. So we have a request to, from the owner's project manager on the school building, for the school building committee. That's Compass Project Management. The request is to allow the town administrator to execute the study enrollment certification for submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This is part of the school building project. And we have an example of the document. And the certification will acknowledge that design alternatives, which may be evaluated as part of the feasibility study, must be in accordance with the following enrollments. So there are three. One is enrollment for a Hanlon Elementary School only, grades K through five, of three hundred fifteen students. The second is for an enrollment of grades K through five in Hanlon and Deerfield Elementary Schools, which would be, which would imply a consolidation of those two schools, five hundred sixty students. And the third, an enrollment for grades K to five for Hanlon and Sheehan Elementary Schools, and that is an enrollment of six hundred eighty-five students. So our job is to authorize the town administrator to execute the certification on behalf of the school building committee. Any questions, discussions? We've heard about this along the way.
Yeah, we've heard about, this is just...
This is, yeah, this is an administrative, yep.
So I move that we authorize the town administrator to execute on behalf of the Select Board the study enrollment certification for submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, better known as the MSBA. Such certificates shall only be executed with the approval of the town administrator, the superintendent of the schools, and the school committee representative.
And I will make a footnote that that vote was taken at the school building committee meeting, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Madam Chairman, for the record, you asked me to review this document, and I've reviewed the document. I have not sought the backup actual enrollment material. I will if you want me to. But I have, would have no problem signing this document.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say I don't think that's necessary. It's been well-vetted in public meetings and...
Yep, just want to make sure.
Yeah. Okay, last on our regular agenda is transfer of funds for Westwood Media Center. This is a regular occurrence, and they are transfers of funds from Comcast and Verizon Payments per the contracts for PEG access funding to Westwood Media Center. Tonight, we have the amounts of eighteen thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents from Comcast, goes through the town to Westwood Media Center, and then two amounts from Verizon, forty-eight thousand, five fifty-nine and thirty-nine cents, sixteen thousand, two sixty and sixty-one cents. The aggregate transfer is eighty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Any questions from anybody on this?
No.
A motion?
Yeah, I'm just sort of know when the, when is the contract up with, is it Verizon that's below the Fife? Are we still negotiating that?
We're currently negotiating with Comcast.
Yes, though.
And Verizon opened, opened the negotiations with a letter, so we're kind of in play with both of them.
Okay.
We haven't begun negotiations with Verizon as of yet, though.
So I move that we approve the transfer of eighteen thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents from Comcast, as well as forty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents, and sixteen thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and sixty-one cents from Verizon and Comcast, totaling eighty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents from the Westwood Media, to Westwood Media Center, per the license agreement that we have with the Westwood Media Center and the Select Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Do we have minutes, Tish?
We do.
These are minutes from January twenty-eighth and February third.
One, two, three.
Okay, the twenty-eighth meeting was an abbreviated meeting preceding Finance and Warrant Commission meeting. And then we have a full meeting on February third. I'll take a motion on January twenty-eighth.
I move that we approve the Select Board minutes of our January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting, consisting of three pages.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. And then February third?
You gave me two of that one.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the February third, two thousand and twenty, Select Board minutes, consisting of nine pages as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Public and press and others?
One thing, Madam Chairman, Mr. Coleman's going to be out of the office, I think, the last two days this week.
Yes.
And, and he is looking to appoint Pam Dukeman as temporary town administrator in his absence. We, the charter says we need a vote approving that, and then he's going to authorize him to send you a letter and the town clerk a letter accordingly.
I will ask a procedural question. It's not on the agenda. Does that impact our ability to do this vote?
And the charter, even though we've, PM is the assistant town administrator, so that's something we need to change?
In the next charter commission. Yeah, it needs, we need to address that.
I don't remember ever voting when Mike Gillett went out of town.
No, we didn't.
We didn't. That doesn't necessarily mean that it was the right way to handle it. It is not on the agenda. I would suggest that you could take this up as a matter of necessity at this point in time because this is the last meeting before he goes out of town.
Right, and I think we should maybe, at a future meeting, vote a policy so we don't have to vote every time in advance of such departure.
We're due to have a discussion about that.
Okay. Because we have the, the right structure in place. And I, I think that, you know, anytime you step out of the office, there's an assumed
Right.
role of hierarchy of who people should go to. I don't view this really any different. We can do a, you know, I would call it almost a rubber stamp vote. I don't think it changes, alters what you would do.
You, you could vote at a future meeting, a policy where anytime he leaves town?
Right.
She becomes de facto temporary acting administrator. Those powers are also clearly defined in the section below where it allows for a temporary administrator. She can only do things that are almost temporary or interim, just to kind of keep the doors open and the lights on.
But, Pat, I have to be honest, I, so we take this vote and it's subject to challenge because it's not posted, or we do what we've always done and just allow PM to assume the role while Pat, while Chris isn't here? And if she does make any action that's subject to challenge, as between those two, I'd rather risk her making a decision that's subject to challenge versus taking a vote on something not on the agenda.
So, so Madam Chair, if I could just elaborate. So Spukman does act as the assistant, and when I am not there, people do go to her from an operational standpoint. From the temporary acting capacity, there would be authorization, she would have the authorization to sign certain documents. So what we would do in this particular case is for those two days, she wouldn't have the authorization to sign those documents. It would wait for my return.
Yep.
And any other matters, I can, I'm still going to be available.
Right.
So we can certainly still do over-the-phone matters.
Yeah, it's not like you're, you know, out of the country and not accessible.
Correct.
You're not going to Antarctica where there's no wifi.
There'll be a fax machine and a computer where...
So I, let's, let's, let's go with that as the plan and with what John said. So I, let's, let's go with that as the plan and with what John said, and then establish what you think should be an understood, and maybe it's something that's revisited each year, because there may be a new board.
Yes.
So why don't we do it that way?
We'll have it on file with the town clerk and then...
Right, is that like an annual vote we could take?
It is. And he, and you could authorize him to send a letter to both you and the town clerk anytime he's going out of town.
Yeah, he, well, sends us emails and tells us when he's going to be out. I think, aren't we, if you were on a vacation, usually where the chair signs for vacations.
Really?
Yeah, we did that with Mike some. Check into that.
I don't recall ever doing that, but that's okay.
Well, this isn't a vacation, so that's okay.
It isn't. It isn't.
What's a vacation?
Good discussion. Why don't you follow up? We'll leave, we'll leave it as-is, that there'll be no authority to sign as town administrator, acting town administrator for PM. And I don't think we foresee anything during the week this week that would anticipate that. No, but you know what? We'll figure that out.
I'll be back Sunday if it's that, anything that important.
We're good.
Yeah, I just think we're in a, we're in an odd environment, and we didn't, it's not on the agenda. I'd prefer we didn't take a vote.
That's fine.
It's not a reflection on you or PM or the decisions, it's just...
Completely understand.
Anything else before we adjourn? So our next meeting is Monday, March 2, 6:30 p.m. We're going to be in the small conference room at the main library preceding the Finance and Warrant Commission public hearing. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.